Good evening. This time we'll call the regular meeting, the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission to Order. Date is June 5th, 2019. The time is 7:00 P.M. Will you join me in pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call.
Eileen McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
David Parent.
Deborah Phillips.
Robert Simon.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Going on, the consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 3rd. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 3rd, 2017, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Consideration of the minutes of the special meeting on April 9th. Is there any corrections or amendments to the minutes of the meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes of the special meeting of May 9th, 2019, be approved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Going on into old business, application A 14-7.2-195 Chimney Hill Road, Sunwood Development Bond Release.
They're good to go. They're ready to release it.
They're ready to?
Yeah, it's good. I would recommend releasing the bond, the rest of the bond.
Okay, I entertain a motion based on Erin's statement that they've satisfied the conditions of their bond. I'll entertain a motion to approve for release of the rest of it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application 19-3.7, I'm sorry, I have to strike that. Application A 14-7.2-195 Chimney Hill Road, Sunwood Development Company, request for bond release be granted.
Motion made. Is second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding the motion? Entertain a vote then. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Okay. All right, going on to application A 19-3.7-988 East Center Street, Benchmark Land Development. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Again, for your record, my name is Dennis Sannaviva. I'm an attorney representing the owner and applicant. To my right is Dave Palumbo, a member of Benchmark Land Development LLC, the property owner at 9988 East Center Street. To my left, David Lord, our soil scientist. Behind me is Marcus Potuck, our engineer from Godfrey &amp; Hoffman. From our site walk back on May 9th, there have been changes to the plan that you saw at the last monthly meeting here at Town Hall, and that change was to relocate some of the wetland creation area based upon conversations that took place during the site walk. I'm going to have David Lord go through those changes just to identify what is being proposed. I know that over the last month or so since that site walk, we have just received a letter from Tilcon, Connecticut indicating authorization consent to do the work, whatever work is done on the neighboring parcel, and there's a letter in the file from the railroad that indicates support of this application. Just tangentially, Mr. Chairman, the members of the commission, I talked to the town engineer slash public works director today, and he indicated that one of the things that if there was to be an approval, he would want as a condition that certain spot grades be placed on any final plan so he could just be assured that the water would flow in the directions and work accordingly. So he just wanted some additional spot grades. I think he talked to Erin about that. At least he represented, he was going to try to get a hold of her. So he was fine with it, and he did indicate that there's another opportunity. Should this be approved, it'll go, of course, to planning and zoning on that. I wanted to distinguish, though, because I know there's concern of the commission from the beginning, that the work that we're proposing to do relates to remediation of the violation is going to take place immediately and is unrelated to the overall site plan. That work is going to be done should this be approved. I know there's a concern about timing.
Well, what's the difference? There's a reason you stated that.
I say that because I know that, at least I had understood that there was a concern on the part of the commission that when you get an approval, the permit is good for five years, and that obviously the key is not to wait for any length of time to do the work to remediate the issues out there. We wanted to make certain, at least I wanted to provide some certainty to this commission, that the action that is necessary to remediate is part of our response to the notice of violation. That you can obviously put a timeframe of getting it done ASAP. I just wanted to provide that.
I thought that regulation changed, or that rule changed, on a state level, on a five-year term.
I think they can extend it actually even longer.
Well, by request?
Yeah, by request.
I didn't think you needed a request. I thought they automatically granted.
I think that's site plan.
Tied together with a planning and zoning.
Yes, and that's how it's worded in the permits when they go out.
What?
That the length of period is the same period of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval should this particular application need, require a planning and zoning approval, or five years, whichever is more. And then you're allowed to apply for an extension. So in this case, the planning and zoning would be five years with an extension to 10 years if that was approved.
Okay. I thought it was something different. I thought it was like 10 years.
Yeah. We wanted to provide the assurances that what we're proposing to do, if it gets approved, we're going to do it and not have to wait five years or four years or three years. But I think Mr. Palumbo indicated both the last meeting and perhaps at the site walk that he was prepared to do the work immediately once approved. So David, if you can just explain some of the changes that have been made since our site walk.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. David Lord, soil scientist for the applicant. I believe you have before you a document which was submitted about a week and a half ago, a revision to May 29th of this year. It's revisions that were incorporated in the original plan, which moved the restoration mitigation compensation measures from the northern side of the existing wetland to the southern side in green shading on this site. The numbers have changed as far as square footage. The numbers are shown in detail on page two. We still provide a two-to-one compensation ratio for the wetland that is proposed to retain the fill over. We're proposing to restore or create two-for-one, meaning two square feet of wetland. For every square foot of wetland, we are proposing to retain the fill on. We are also proposing to restore to native vegetation 2,960 square feet of upland. Review zone area, this is the area that we walked during the site walk, that was upland at the time when I flagged the site back in 2008, continues to be upland. That area which is presently excavated and seeded will be planted to a mixture of trees and shrubs to provide upland habitat and a visual buffer and screening along the outer eastern and southern edges of the restoration area. All the other components of the plan are similar. The numbers have been changed slightly because the square footage has been changed from the well and creation we were proposing to do over in this portion of the site to this portion of the site. They're reflective of the same compensation ratio, square footage, based on how many square feet of each of those activities we are proposing to do. The numbers of plant species put into those areas has been adjusted accordingly. That's all I really have to present as far as the plan goes. If the commission has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Maybe the plantings, there was some issue with?
Yes, I was going to get to that in just a moment. Concerning the plan itself, are there any questions?
You keep mentioning about the two-to-one square foot ratio of your doing.
Yes.
How does this affect the square footage of the Tilcon property? How is that in your calculations when the brook was open and that? Because I know you have made reference to two separate properties here, and if there's a violation on Tilcon's property, it really goes to Tilcon.
The majority of the existing fill which is proposed to be retained is located on the Tilcon property. There's a very small portion. The area that the chairman is asking about is shown on page five of my report in the blue dashed lines. That is the area. That whole or entire area is what is proposed to be retained. It is generally in this portion of the project site, and that is the 522 square feet of wetland filling that we are proposing to retain in place. In addition, we are proposing in this portion of the site, and that is again primarily on the Tilcon property, to restore 100 square feet of wetland, which extends both on the Tilcon property and onto the subject property, Mr. Palumbo's property here. So the majority of the wetland filling that is to be retained is on the Tilcon property.
It flagged out as true wetlands and not upland review area?
Correct, yes. Yes, in 2008, when I did the original wetland delineation, which is shown on page five in my document, was wetland by either soil type or intermittent water course designation based on plant vegetative cover.
But all those, that area's all been calculated in the new mitigation area?
Yes, that is the area that is shown in the calculations at the bottom of page two. The total wetland impact, the 522 square feet, was primarily on the Tilcon property. That's on page two. Again, the blue shaded areas. Oh, this is the, oh, I'm sorry. Marcus just corrected me. The majority of the wetland is located on?
Benchmark.
Benchmark's property. I took the wrong line on my draw. That's why I'm a soil scientist and not an engineer, sir. So the 522 square feet is entirely on the benchmark property. The 100 square feet of wetland restoration is on the benchmark property, and all of the wetland creation is on the benchmark property. So none of that is on the Tilcon property.
Okay. Questions, Ally?
No questions.
Nick?
David, Tilcon's got a violation. How many square feet is tied into their violation?
For the record, Marcus Potuck, Godfrey Hoffman. By Tilcon's violation, you mean for filling in the upland or, I'm not sure what?
Well, we're talking about two different issues here. I believe you're talking about Tilcon's violation. There's some filling that Tilcon did that they weren't supposed to, somewhere close to the proximity where you guys are.
The Tilcon violation, I understand the question, is in the location of this box here. It is in the blue dashed lines on the pages that I referenced in my report, but it's associated with this catch basin and inlet at the time in 2008 when I did the wetland delineation. So it's a very small.
What I'm trying to correlate here is if this goes further and you're approved, is Tilcon going to, if there's a violation with Tilcon that has to be addressed, is that going to influence your project in any way?
No, all of the square footage of wetland impact, be it on the Tilcon property or the benchmark property, is incorporated into my restoration compensation plan. So all of the impacts are dealt with in my plan.
Okay, thank you.
With one property of the other.
All right. Dave?
No questions.
Debbie?
No questions.
Bob?
Negative, Mr. Time.
Erin, your turn.
All right. We went out, there's a site investigation we conducted at the special meeting, May 9th, and that was very helpful. The engineer had spray painted on the gravel the property line between the Tilcon property and the benchmark property, which is all at one grade, and it's all gravelled, so it's hard to discern whether it is. So that was helpful. We saw the drainage, how they've done a temporary drainage ditch to drain the wetlands because the wetlands were backing up, creating quite an inundation after storms. So they had dug a ditch to let that drain, and we saw the beginning of their restoration work that they had started in the few days before that. So it was very, I felt it was very instructive to go out there because it's kind of a complicated property to wrap your brain around. It's got a lot of moving parts. So my environmental planners' report went out in Friday's mail. That was packet number two. I hope you all got that. Packet number one was the big manila envelope. Two was the business envelope. Two was the business envelope, and it had mark number two on the actual envelope. Anyway, so that was the environmental planners' report on this site. It's a five-and-a-quarter-page report with a letter attached at the end. The letter was a May 28th letter that went out to Attorney Sannaviva, asking him to provide consent of the owner of the property that we now know is Tilcon property. There was some confusion if it was Providence and Worcester, if it was Tilcon, but I think, believe we now understand it to be Tilcon. And today, at 4:30 today, the consent came in from Tilcon, and a promotional, a positive promotion of the development came in from Providence and Worcester. These two letters came in at the close of day today. So we have that. We have the consent now. I guess what we don't have, and the commission will have to address it tonight, is what you're going to do with the violation on the Tilcon side. It's very small. The wetland filling was about five feet by 10 feet, something like that. Then, of course, they changed the pipe, you know, this alteration with the pipe, and then there was filling in the upland review area. So that's the issue on the Tilcon property. The two properties are tied really in a way, so they're tied. So if you feel like approving the benchmark application, it would be good to address the Tilcon matter at the same time. As far as requested information and some omitted information, some concerns, that's on page two and three. I don't know if you want to go through it, Mr. Chairman. Several things that I would recommend be changed or added or modified slightly.
I'm not happy about going through it tonight. Why didn't you go through it with them?
The plan came in on May 29th, so I wrote this on May 31st. No, the plan came in on May 30th, so I wrote on May 31st. So I reviewed it the day after it came in. So that was last Friday that I typed this up. So we could go over it, and then the next, as the report goes on, there's some recommendation. I feel strongly, as I said before, that wetland filling should be.
Hang on a minute. Do you have this report, this current report?
I do.
And what is, are you in agreement with everything that she's looking for and the conditions of approval?
We are, Mr. Chairman. I know that Mr. Lord wanted to just address the concern that Erin had about the type of plantings, but it's not a big deal. I mean, it just was a comment.
Well, I will, we'll point out, we can get into the type of plantings, but I'm going to point out that I would not recommend eastern red cedar because the aphids are eating it alive. They're not lasting. I've lost all the red cedars in my fields and gone, and even the arborvitae's I've been spraying with malathion to try and control the aphids, eating them. So I'm not questioning the list of native species. I'm just pointing out that those two, I don't think I would recommend planting. But I'm not looking to go through every line here. If you want to work with Erin on getting this all done, if they're willing to agree to all this, we don't need to go through this, correct, Erin? If they get you all this information?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if they agree with it, but yes.
Well, they just said they did with the exception of the plantings. So you want to discuss the plantings, and we can go briefly on the plantings?
I think, yeah, the only, at least in my discussions with David, and he's right here, under condition of approval on page five, it was number five, wetland plantings, to use only native species, no columnar arborvitae shall be installed. And that was in David's plan, was to have arborvitae in?
May I? That particular arborvitae is native. That's northern white cedar. That's the Latin name for northern white cedar. Google it if you need to. Columnar, whatever they call it, that is the Latin name for northern white cedar. I'm sorry, I use a different Latin name for northern white cedar, so I don't know what to say. I believe columna arborvitae, isn't that the landscapers' arborvitae?
It's generally used in the landscaping usage.
The hula occidentalis, also known as northern white cedar or eastern arborvitae, eastern coniferous tree in the cypress family, native to eastern Canada and much of the north, northeastern United States, widely cultivated as an ornamental.
Yes, I think the ornamental variety, it's what you see in everyone's yard. Not everyone, but.
It's the one you typically see in everyone's yard that ends up being mushroom-shaped because the deer eat it.
Or the aphids.
Right.
One or the others getting that product.
If I can, just, the selection of the arborvitae was to create at the outer edge of the restoration area, a tall, dense, green visual buffer and screening between the operation side of the site and the restoration areas to the north. It's in an upland environment of disturbed soils that are historically disturbed. Its purpose is, it's not going to be trimmed and landscaping artistically done. It's there to provide a very quick fill-in based on the spacing listed in the plan, provide a green wall that divides the operation play, a portion of the property, from the restoration property. It's not listed in any way as an invasive species. I would agree with the commissioner that it's more of a native species. Its use has sort of migrated to a more landscaping or ornamental use, but the actual, the suja occidentalis is a native species that has been migrated by cultivars for different uses.
I don't.
But it's not one that I feel is in any way inappropriate for this particular use.
I would probably agree with you, except that between the aphids and the deer, it's only going to last a year or two. That's the issue, one of my issues, anyway. It's the same as the red cedar. They're going too. So I don't know what you would replace it with that was not deer-friendly or aphid-friendly, or your intention is to spray it for aphids.
What I would suggest then is that I come up with a couple of alternative, well, plantings for this buffer screening, submit them to the office, and we can hopefully work it out with.
Is this, who are you, I'm confused. Who are you screening it from? You're using it as a?
We're using it as a buffer visual screen between the operations portion of the site where the trucks and the gravel surface is and the restoration area, which is all greenery and totally vegetated to the north.
You're screening the commercial property from the residential area?
From my perspective, the operation portion to the restoration area.
Absolutely.
That'll benefit the wildlife as well.
You don't want to see ugly, huh?
All right, Erin, where do you want to go with this? I think they're certainly willing to put species there, but we can't, I don't think we can argue whether the arborvitae's or the northern white cedar, et cetera, et cetera, is the issue here tonight. Where do you want to go with this?
This particular item? There's lots of other things, but on this particular planting item, you know what? If you want to put landscaping plants there, fine. I just thought it was a natural area before, and I'd like to see it a natural area now because it's good for wildlife and birds and such. That's all. If you want it to look like a development, you know, a restaurant landscaping type affair, then that's fine. We can go that way, too. What I call northern white cedar grows in bogs. It grows about 70 feet high. It's native to Connecticut.
That's white pine, isn't it? That white pine?
No, it's like cedar bogs. Cedar bogs, that's northern white cedar. It grows 70 feet high. This is, I guess, a cultivar, as Mr. Lord explained, it's a cultivar that's used in yards. It's fine. It's really not worth discussing much longer.
Erin, I think that once they plant it, it may look, when it first goes in, but it'll get all wild and funky shaped after things come and browse on it and nest in it.
Well, there's different species on different heights of that product, isn't there?
Yes, there is. And we are not proposing to maintain it with sharing a landscape-type usage. It's.
Yeah, but some of that stuff has got a cap of like 15 feet, and others got a cap of 40 feet. cap of 40 feet.
Yes, there are, yes, there are...
So which variety are you putting in?
Basically, the 15 to 20 foot height is the, is the one that I generally use on plantings like this.
Well, okay, so if there's got to be fine tune on the planting scheme, I think that's something you and Aaron can work out. That's not a deal maker or a deal breaker here. I'm concerned that you've got, you've got at least 11 conditions on her list of recommendations that you agree with all of them.
Yes, the answer is yes. I mean, five, six, and seven all come from David Lord's report. I think the response that we've given earlier in the, as far as three and four with the work being done on Tilcon, cleaning the oak tree root area, which is number two, they are all acceptable. We've gone over it, I've gone over it with Mr. Palumbo sitting to my right, and it would be fine.
Okay, now, on her page two and three, request on certain items, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but you're going to satisfy those requests also?
Actually, we have those plans available today.
Yes, a number of those items are actually on my page.
Are you going to be able to satisfy all the items on her list?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, there's no, no issues there. So you're going to get all that information to her?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and you're going to post a $5,000 bond?
That's correct.
And the bond will cover not only the work out in the field, but it will cover bringing all the plans up to her list of requests?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Let's just talk a moment about the Tilcon, is there any, any issues on the Tilcon violation, we'll call it? Now, from what I gather, they're probably, the extent of the wetland seems to be in front of the pipe that they connect it to. And then, of course, there's the 50 feet upland review area that was in conjunction with that, but the most of that had railroad track on it anyway. So it turns out to be, I think it's that section of wetland in front of the pipe that's Tilcon. Does anyone have any issues with that at this time?
What are we gaining by disturbing it? It's already there, it's in place.
Well, I don't think you could even, in this case, with the pipe connected, I don't think you, you're going to have pipe and then you're going to have five feet of open area.
Yeah, no, I don't see any reason to disturb it, leave it the way it is and...
Dave?
Same idea.
Debbie?
That's fine.
Robert? I, I, I think the, whether we lost some wetlands, but we seem to have gained savior of what is left there. There's not a pile of trash dumped on it and everything else, so maybe this will do the service. Okay, anything else, Aaron?
I met with the law department today, and it was important to get consent, which we got, we got that from Tilcon. The other thing was to reiterate that it's our position that the wetland commission does have jurisdiction, that Tilcon is not subject to federal jurisdiction. And the other thing, the last thing that I got from the law department, if you're going to approve this tonight, it was suggested that you should state into the record that this approval does incorporate filling, does incorporate the filling and the wetlands filling on Tilcon, but that can remain. The filling can remain on Tilcon property.
Okay, in the, in the motion to approve...
Right, because today they don't have an application in...
I know, but in the motion to approve or condition of approval, no, it's in our motion to approve, if we so approve this application tonight, to include the fill that's on Tilcon property can remain.
Yes, because then they don't have to come and apply to us, it takes care of it.
Yep. We just talked about it. Okay, all right, so at this time, you have any other comments?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused, are we having two bonds or one bond?
No, there's one bond, you requested one bond.
Well, the one bond was for the planting, and then on page five, number one, that was at the special meeting, you had suggested that to me, so I put it in here.
Well, why can't that all be in the, in the bond, as well as the getting you all of the requests on page two and three?
Say that again, I'm sorry?
I just made the comment, I thought you understood, that this $5,000 bond was going to include getting you all the requests you have on this two and three, page two and page three.
And the planting plan.
And the planting plan. And you want to be sure to point out that it's going to bring in an ASBIL survey, as in bond one, or item one, on the, on the recommendation.
Okay, then maybe we just take number one and just say, submit an ASBIL survey, period. You don't have to take out the word bond there.
Well, that can, you can change it on that.
So the first condition, are you going to move on? So if it's approved tonight, you're going to, condition number one would be submit an ASBIL survey to confirm the approved development improvements with constructives permitted. Is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we'll just take out the bond part of it?
Is that correct?
Okay.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I just have one more question for Dennis.
Okay, Nick's got a question, Dick?
Did you guys check to see about the flow on the storm drain? It's whether it's except your pipes on the...
To the road?
Yes.
I talked to Mr. Baltramidis about that today, and I think he's going to be working with Marcus Potek to confirm the depth. I think there's some concern about whether the depth is as shown on the town plans, so that that is something that's going to be reviewed.
What happens if it's not? That's the only thing I'm going to confirm.
Then we, when we go to P and Z, the grading will change, just to make sure that it works, either that or perhaps the town will be willing to put it in a location that it says it's supposed to be at.
What I'm concerned is that the storm drains out on that road, East Center Street, or whatever it's called, the flow line may be at three or four feet. By the time you go through across your park lot to get the drains to shift out that way, if you're five or six feet down with your catch basins and your drainage pipe, how are you going to make the water run uphill? That's all I'm asking, I brought it up at the special meeting, that if you stand out there and look, so what was important to me was the flow elevation knowing in the street, because I don't think you guys want to pay the expense to tear all that up and make it deeper, just to pacify what you want to do. So I, but it's, obviously, we didn't get anywhere with it.
No, and I'll say that I know that it was something that Aaron did raise with engineering right after the sidewalk. I know that Mr. Baltramidis indicated as such, but I don't think that it's actually been confirmed at this point.
Okay. Now, I did bring up, thinking here a moment, did bring up an issue. When you're plowing snow out there, you ended up pushing, is it soda ash or fly ash? Out, out into this wetland area. How are you going to prevent that from next year?
I think Commissioner Kern, you and I had talked that we...
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Palumbo, Commissioner Kern, correct? And you and I had spoken, I think the chairman might have been at the sidewalk, we were talking about, and I think the two of us, and yourself, talked about going to the bank side up in the front.
West, yeah, out there, well, we did, I think we did, the fact that it shows up, it'd be a shame to see it all in the...
Yeah, or take, if it gets to be like some of the winters, we'd have to take it out.
Concrete blocks or something might prevent that from happening, but, okay. Everybody all set?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll enter a motion to determine the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application A19-3.7988, East Center Street Benchmark Land Development be deemed not to be a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A19-3.7988, East Center Street Benchmark Land Development be approved, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in Environmental Planner's Report dated May 31st, 2019, and with the understanding that, what is it? The fill at the Tilcon property remain in place.
Could you repeat the conditions of approval for me? Thank you.
I said, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in Environmental Planner's Report dated May 31st, 2019.
And then with the understanding that Tilcon...
That the fill and, and not, and with the...
Tilcon property?
With the, and with the understanding that the fill at the Tilcon property remain in place.
Okay, I would just make one change, that for my condition number one, we're taking out the bond?
We can do that, and I thought we agreed that you'd do that later on, and that condition number one provides for no posting of a bond. Here's, there will, bond's not required for...
Bond's not required and...
For condition number one, yes.
Right, and to submit an ASBIL, because not, to add the word submit in there.
And they will, and they will submit the ASBIL survey.
Right.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for vote, Ally?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. Chairman, I'd like to make two comments before they leave. As you can see, there's not a lot of people here, these are not meetings attended by the public, the only way that anybody knows this happening is they have to watch the television show. I think if anybody's watched, they will see that something that probably could have been handled, maybe three or four meetings, with a lot less engineer, soil scientist, than engineering expense, could have been done. So that I would, I would hope that anybody watching this thing or talking about it, when you go in to get a building permit, you go to the next counter and you ask if there's any wetlands implications. The other thing that got kind of completely overlooked is that Mr. Palumbo has done something remarkable in these restored rail freight operations to Wallingford. We haven't had that, I think, in nearly 50 years, and we've been talking with him, find out this, he's taking 16 trucks that would be fighting on East Center Street, taking those off the road, and he's doing it with the, he's doing it by shipping by rail, and also was pleased to find that, I guess, they're restoring rail service from Hartford to Middletown, so that I think you made a smart move, and I hope you're firm profflers.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I appreciate, and I apologize for any of the inconvenience over the law, over this long haul. I really sincerely apologize. Thank you for your time and your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, going on, application A19-4.13, Technology Drive, class school expansion.
For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, I'm a licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm of Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. I'm here tonight representing basically class schools, or also known as Bright Giddings Learning Center on 3 Technology Drive here in Wallingford. They're proposing expansion to the existing daycare facility. I'm going to go through what the existing conditions are, run through the site layout plan, run through the actual development plan, and then get into Aaron's Environmental Planner's Report. So basically, the property is located along Research Parkway, which is on the west side of the property, and Technology Drive, which is on the north side. Technology Drive is actually a cul-de-sac, so there's no through traffic. We have a single driveway coming in, our parking in front in an existing daycare, or facility located there, and a large existing playground area with a basketball court and a small shed. Most of the property, as you can see by this green shade, there's a large amount of wetlands on the property, and also by the green hatch, the upland review area, so it takes up a major portion of the property. With this expansion, we've already gone to the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals to get a front yard setback reduction, so that we could expand outwardly towards Technology Drive with our proposed parking lot expansion, and therefore, we didn't go have to go east-west and impact the wetlands beyond what was absolutely necessary with our proposed building. The uniqueness about the site is that all the drainage is collected in three catch basins, routed through an oil, existing oil water separator, runs into an existing sand filter, into a detention basin, and then is discharged to the north of the existing wetlands. Additionally, the existing building has all its roof drainage connected to some underground galley systems, and that also goes out to the wetlands. So what we're proposing to do with this expansion is add a wing, new wing off the west side of the building. It's approximately 6,500 square feet, so we're basically doubling the size of this daycare facility. With that, we're going to shift the driveway entrance a little bit to the east, expand the parking lot, create a loop circulation through the parking lot with one-way traffic. This way, we have met some of the requirements of zoning. And again, we're not expanding to the west with the parking lot, and we have approximately a 18-foot expansion to the east, however, that is, remains outside your upland review area. Additionally, we're maintaining grades so that all the runoff from the parking lot flows from east to west. And we're going to continue to utilize the three catch basins to collect the storm water runoff, it'll run through the existing oil water separator, through the sand filter, through the detention basin, and then be discharged to the upland, you know, outside the upland review area. With respect to the roof drainage, we are actually going to remove the existing underground system and install a new one just behind the proposed dumpster, and I will show that in a minute on the site development plan. The existing building will be approximately 37.3 feet off the newly delineated wetlands. As the commission is aware, through this process, when I met with Aaron, she had asked that we get a new wetland delineation in two specific areas where she had concern. We got George Logan from Rema Ecological Services out there, and those wetlands are depicted on the latest set of plans that you have in your packet. Those were also the wetland flags that were noted during our special meeting on May 9th. One of the major changes I made between, after that, after that meeting and the originally submitted plans, was I removed the grading off the southwest corner of the building, and we are actually installing a wall. We had approximately six feet of fill that we were, we had to make up because of the way the slope dropped off, and we have to maintain the first floor elevation. So in order to do that, we are installing a wall on the western side of the building, and what we have is we have egress out of the building, out of each classroom, onto a concrete pad, and from that, a step down. And the surface between the building and the wall, we're either going to do as mulch or as stone. We just want a walkable surface so that the kids, in an emergency, can get out. Other than that, these doors on the western side of the building will not be used, because if they go to the playground area, they'll go through the building and use a door, either from the existing building or from one of the other doors that accesses directly onto the playground area. Outside of the wall area, originally with that grading, we were looking to do some kind of grass or plantings, but because of how close we are to the wetland area and wanting to maintain it, and do as little impact to the upland review area as possible, we've agreed to plant native shrubs in that area, and similar, probably pick something like a high bush, high bush, blueberry, and something other that can tolerate some wet feet every once in a while in this area due to the proximity of the wetlands. During our special meeting, Mr. Kern had, was looking at the detention basin area, and originally I had thought that the basin was undersized, based upon the configuration, but his keen observation, he had mentioned it a couple times, so I went back, I relooked at everything, reran the analysis, and I was surprised to find out that although the basin looks smaller, it actually is functioning and can handle all the storms up to and including the hundred... it actually is functioning and can handle all the storms up to and including the 100-year storm. I then went and ran it for the proposed situation and find that it's, again, it meets the requirements, we're able to handle all the storms up to the 100-year storm. So I was remiss in telling the commission during that site walk that I thought I was going to have to expand the basin. So in this case, the basin can stay as-is, same with the sand filter. It's of adequate size to handle the proposed expansion. The only thing that really is necessary, as we all noticed, and I wholeheartedly agree, is the basin and the sand filter have been used for the dumping of grass clippings and brush. So maintenance needs to be done in that area, and it needs to be cleaned out. Given the fact that the sand filter was installed approximately in 2003, 2004, it's time for a refresh. So as part of the maintenance, we are actually going to call for like the top foot of sand to be removed and replaced with new sand. And then with the cleanup, that should get that basin and sand filter working in optimal conditions. With the fact that the sand filter and the basin are adequate size, I didn't necessarily need to use this front lawn area and create a swale area, as we had discussed also during that special meeting. I was looking at that, but I was also fighting with the grades and tried to force the water in that direction. And then I would have had to install a second oil-water separator, which really didn't make a lot of sense. So I rerunning the calculations and proving that the existing basin is adequately sized, I was able to not have to install that other feature on the site. The only other real major issue that was discussed during our site walk was the basketball court, which was installed without a permit between 2005 and 2006. The current owners did not do that work, but we also noted that, you know, it is there. It is very close to the existing wetland line that was just recently flagged. And I know the commission had some discussion whether they were going to make a notice of violation, leave it as an unpermitted feature on the site. There were a couple different options, and I believe Erin noted that in her environmental planners report. Within the report, Erin had eight comments. Two of them are actually doubled up, and I do agree to all these comments. I don't have any particular issue. With respect to her first comment, I think she mentions that she would like the storm basin and sand filter work, the restoration completed prior to commencement, and then, and within a three-month timeframe. I would request that that be slightly modified to say that no building permit will be issued until that work's done, because I think that'll ensure that that, because that'll ensure it has to get done before they can put a shovel in the ground for the building or parking lot. And two, it'll ensure that they get it done in a timely fashion, because I know they want to start breaking ground on this as soon as we get construct, we get P and Z approval and get construction drawings done. So I just, that would probably be the only comment I have with respect to her conditions of approval. I've made a lot of these changes, the little changes on the drawings, like removing the errant contour line, installing silt fence around the proposed outlet to the new underground detention roof system. So I've already taken care of those on my plan, so it shouldn't take me long to update the plan and get Erin her final copies. And again, the drainage calculations pretty much take care of what the water division was concerned about, other than things that I can't control, like the size of the water and sewer laterals for the building. So if there are any comments with respect to what we're proposing or what we discussed at the special meeting, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
Dave?
Let's go over, one again, because I have to put this in a motion. Right now, this is work to restore storm basin and sand filter basin to be completed prior to commencement, expansion activities, but you wanted to say, you have a little bit different language.
I would like it to say to be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit, which basically means that?
Prior to, oh, right.
They cannot go and pull their building permit and put a shovel in the ground until they clean this work, clean those areas up and restore them.
Chris, if I could ask you a question. You haven't applied to planning and zoning yet, so I imagine you would apply fairly soon after this approval.
Friday is the due date, yes.
Do you anticipate them building this before the winter?
No, because I don't think that they are necessarily going to be able to get approvals. Approvals will happen in July, and that won't give them enough time, because they're going to want to do this work through the summer months, when school is technically not in session. That was the original discussion I had with the architect. Now, the fact that we are, because of wetlands, we postponed a month in wetlands. We missed the planning and zoning submittal, waiting for a traffic study. I don't know if they're going to try and do this over the winter. I haven't really figured out what their plan is. The original plan was to try to get this all approved early spring this year, so that they could be doing construction now. That obviously hasn't happened. So the idea from the owner last time I did speak with him is September of 2021 is when he wanted to have all this work done. So now we have to back into that and see when we have to start to get all this done.
Okay, my point being, I don't see any reason to leave all those branches and yard waste in the storm basin and in the sand filter over the winter. You don't have to reconfigure the basin. I think just a few men could, people, a few people could take those branches and grass clippings and all that nonsense out of the basin. It really would take half a day, maybe a day?
I understand, and I would agree with you. But again, I'm looking at this from the perspective of the business, of what they're doing here. They're going to have to get someone in there to mobilize. I don't know, logistically, I don't know if they're willing, if they're going to do it. But if that's what this commission and your office wants, and wants it done, say it's got to be done by September, then make that a condition. Put it, put it on there, and that's the way it'll be. I'm fine with that, because I don't believe I need planning and zoning approval to clean that out.
No.
That's a maintenance issue. So if you want it done now, then, then put a timeframe on when you want it done by.
Yes, I did.
Well, Chris, just let back off on it, because you just stated it with the approval that you want, that would be the first issue to be addressed.
Yes.
I'm sure they're going to want to do some of this prior to winter coming, if they can't whatever, go through the winter with it. So because of the school year starting in September or August. Why she's brought this up, is there any way we can, you save them a ton of money by not having to replace those sand filters and those swale areas? Put some type of protective fence up, so that the little ones can't sneak out and get down in there? And, I mean, we saw debris that looked like somebody was maybe catching frogs or? I'm just worried that somebody's going to get down in there with no security, because there's always a hole in the fence, or somebody's not looking, and out goes one of the little kids. So I don't know, is it some way that that can be secured? That sand filter drainage area, or no?
On a permanent basis or on a temporary basis?
No, permanently, just have it installed, a fence around the whole thing, after it's reconstructed and cleaned out?
Yes, in fact, the basin, because of the depth, technically should have a fence around it, because of the depth. So that's one of the things we will make sure, and yes, we can get a fence around it. Again, similar to some of the other comments, like with my discharge, we're going to have to work around some of the trees and stuff that are actually there, but I think we can get it in there, because of the depth, we can encircle both with some kind of fencing.
I think just by telling the landscaper that's groom in the area now to stop doing what he's doing is going to have a big effect on the function of the stormwater discharge in the way it does. So that's, that's a plus, if even if verbally, you can stop him from throwing his grass clippings in that area. That's going to be a big help.
I, I agree, and as one of the things I pointed out is that the owners that I'm representing have only, you know, have had it for a year, roughly a year this June. Now, whether or not they retain the same person and he's doing the same thing, I'll get to the bottom of that, and we'll have a discussion. Because they are from Miami, and they probably don't realize what they have on the property. I don't even know if they've actually ever been up here. But we'll get this taken care of and get the maintenance back on schedule.
Okay. Ally? Debbie?
No.
Rob? Dave? No, he's sorry to say hi. You're all sent to me. All right, Erin, you got anything else here?
Um, no, I'm good with my conditions, yeah.
What's that?
I, I stand by my conditions of approval on page five.
Well, you're in agreement with her conditions request for approval? Okay, I think I would like to add a bond number in here, because if there's, if there's other information that's needed on maps. You got all the information you need, Erin?
No.
There's, there's things missing.
Yeah, they're minor, but there's a list of things that he's got to put on.
That's what I thought, so I, I'd like to see a bond associated with this that seems to keep everybody more in line.
Do you want it to be a conservation bond or a construction bond or?
Well, I, I think a, a bond to satisfy all the conditions of approval.
See, I was thinking more of a bond to cover the whole project, because that's a tight area for somebody to get in with a bulldozer or excavator or a crane to set there whatever they're going to be doing with the building. And it's going to be a sensitive area throughout the whole duration of the, of the?
That's fine.
Construction, so I was thinking more, can we make it a construction bond, Erin, for the time it starts, the time it's completed?
I mean, hang on a second. When we get involved in these bonds, they're supposed to be specific for certain things, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but you can list what the bond is for.
Yeah.
Multiple items. It can be for construction purposes, it can be for environmental purposes.
Or planting plan.
Planting plans, or to satisfy your, I don't want to say, conditions of approval, which also includes different information you're looking for. So how do you want to, how would you describe that type of bond?
Well, I, frankly, I don't know, what is your concern about these conditions? Is there one condition you're more concerned about here?
I'm just, I don't want to get down the line and they didn't send me this, or they didn't do that, or they, they didn't do this condition, or they didn't do that condition.
I'm more concerned, Erin, about the, under the construction sequence, they get out there into the wetlands, trying to make their job easier to put this building up. Are they going to come in with a big crane and be able to reach out and do everything from a dry point upland review area? Or are they going to be thrashing around in there to make the? You're taking a wetlands footprint, and you're trying to put a building in, in that footprint. So we all know that contractors always tend to make their job easier. They go a bit wider than what they need to be. Yes or no?
Well, no, I, of course, I've seen that. But I go out, what soon as Chris, soon as the silt fence is in, I go out and inspect it. They can't go any further, okay? I make sure it's in the right place, it's well-installed. And if, I mean, most people don't move it in the middle of the night. I have seen it once or twice, but usually then they stay within that boundary.
All right, so then what are you recommending for a bond? What do you think would be a feasible bond? And what would it, in detail, just wetland issues?
I think your, your real concern is maybe erosion would get into the wetland, that wooded swamp, right? Is that the real concern? Not that they wouldn't plant the plants or something, or they wouldn't clean out the storm basin. It's more you're afraid that something might happen to that wooded swamp over the one, two-year construction period. Well, you could, that's really an erosion control bond.
I thought that's planning and zoning though, S and E.
No, no, we do erosion control. That's, in fact, later on the agenda tonight, that's with Maniri, the Hidden Brook subdivision. That's an erosion control bond.
So, sound fair?
You know, it sounds fair if everybody does what they're supposed to do. The question is, is, oh, they didn't, they didn't send this plant to me, or they didn't do this for me. I mean, look how long it took the people with a bond to satisfy the conditions of the bond. Other developers, a developer, doesn't make a difference who. All of a sudden, you're spending, how many times has some applications been on this for a bond request? A re, bond return, return bond request?
About 10 times.
Yeah.
Like some of them.
And that seems to be the only thing that some people realize, is that to get my money back, I've got to get this thing done, as simple as it sounds.
Okay, question, I don't know. Would a construction bond include all these? I mean, would include all these changes, the things you asked me for? Because you've asked for, because it does seem that if you don't submit this report or submit that report, you're not constructing the building properly. Or, or am I wrong?
I didn't hear the, I didn't get the last.
Okay, here, okay, I'm going to try it this way. You have all these things that you want done, and all, okay. So now, would that be covered under a construction bond?
That's a good question. However, we, I, the law department has said we should focus on erosion control bonds and planting plans. So recently, with the tractor supply, it was actually the tractor supply applicant that said, wait a minute, planning and zoning does erosion control bonds, and you're doing, you're double doing. So that was the first time we explored the idea of doing it together, a joint erosion control bond. But our main concern is sedimentation into the wetlands and the watercourses and the streams and the ponds. As a commission, that's our main concern. Secondary concern is, are they really going to plant, ever plant the plants that we've asked for? Are the plants going to live? So that's, we've done planting bonds just for plants. But really, most of our bonds are about erosion control, as opposed to construction.
But this, you, you have eight items on this agenda. Let's say you had one item on this recommendation, conditions of approval, because you have, they have satisfied all these other questions. If they had, a week ago, came in and had all these lists, everything on this list on their plans that needed to be done and agreed to everything, you'd have one condition of approval. They've satisfied the conditions.
Well, we'd still have the placards, we'd still have the water division, right? We need that. But yeah, the rest of them could be on there.
So, but it isn't done. It wasn't done a week ago, it wasn't done two weeks ago. It's here tonight in front of us, and I want to be sure it gets done.
Oh, I get it. No, I, I understand the difference, I get it now, yeah. It would have been simpler if he had revised it and handed it in yesterday or something.
Yeah, it would be nice, but.
I'm not trying to make it tough, Chris, I'm just trying to make it so we're protecting what our interest is. Too many times, I've seen planning and zoning overlook, well, that's a wetlands issue. They, they went out with the bulldozer, or they went a bit further than they're supposed to, or they put a basketball court, and nobody knows how it got there. I'm not opposed to, I'm just trying to make it work, so we're protecting our interest in that area, because you've got wetlands all around the whole project. It's a, I'm surprised that's there, but it's there. So I have no, no qualms about putting any addition on. I just want to protect our interest in what needs to be protected. I completely, I completely understand and appreciate what you're saying. And, and, you know, I got these comments late last week. I've learned over 26 years, I mean, yes, I could have spent a lot of time over the weekend, updated these plans, got your 12 sets back in. But in past, that's not been well-received. I'd rather say, most of these comments are minor, I agree with what Erin's done. I've already got them on my plan that I'm, I'm going to do, hand back to her, and submit to planning zoning. So the things that I can personally take care of with the drawings are done.
But they're not here.
They're not there.
And that's what item six says. If item six, final set of plans to reflect these items, if she got them to you two weeks ago, they would have been on the plan tonight to approve. So they're not on the item, they're not on the plan to approve. We have them in front of us to deal with. This is what I'm trying to avoid. All that, that, all this set of, final set of plans, that should have been done prior to getting here.
Completely agree. If we had enough time, if I'd gotten the comments earlier and had enough time, we could have gotten them in. And, you know, and that's one reason why I did not come back, I did not come before you and met. I tabled it because I had these comments, and I wanted to do the revisions and have the special meeting. So I can appreciate what you're saying, and I understand it's, it's working out the system so that everything falls in a timely fashion.
And, and the only way that I can totally feel comfortable that that'll get done is with a bond.
That's fine.
And then how to word that in, whether it's part of the construction or if it's part of recommendations, or if it's, it's environmental?
Oh, well, I just had an alternate, parallel idea. If you took condition number two, four, five, and six, and, and put them together as a condition, saying these four conditions have to be done within three months, and handed in within three months, or something like that.
And what then?
And the rest of them you approve as conditions.
Well, you're not going to bond those, those three?
No, I'm saying you add a bond, and it's just a general erosion control bond at the end.
What's that again, though?
You, you add a bond to my condition, that would be another condition, would be a bond, for erosion control bond on the whole site.
But, but how does that tie together with those three that need to be done?
Because it was actually four is number two, four, five, and six. You, they're the ones that could have been done over the weekend by Chris, for?
And, and those are erosion control items on your list?
No, they're not. I'm saying, those are the things he could have done over the weekend and handed it into you today. The rest of them?
Okay, you want to bond those items?
No, not those four.
You don't want to bond those items. But those are the items that we're concerned about. But those are the items that we're concerned about getting, I'm concerned about getting done. How are you going to be sure to get them done? What method do you have? You going to pull his permit? You're not going to give him a planning and zoning permit?
If I may, Aaron, you have, you give a report to planning and zoning when you get this, when you get the package, correct? You can quite literally state that those, your conditions, those conditions have been met, and therefore it does not have a positive review from your department, and you won't give one until those are met. So that forces anyone, an applicant like myself, to make sure your comments that are drawing based get addressed before they go to planning and zoning, because you can hold up the entire planning and zoning process by not signing off.
But I don't want it to backtrack, and they're going to use my construction bond, maybe that's the wrong word to use, with planning and zoning, and then wedge, wedge one or the other out. I want mine to be in place from the start to the finish to make sure that the wetlands don't get swamped in by muck.
Correct.
So how do we, the construction bond is the wrong word. We have to come up with the right word to put in for the bond.
The wording, I agree, you have to come up with something. But you put your bond down for whatever amount, and that stays in place, and that takes care of the issues that you're worried about, like erosion into wetlands, the cleaning up of the sand filter, and the detention basin. I agree with all that. The stuff that has to do with drawings, I believe Aaron can take care of administratively by either giving a positive review for planning and zoning or a negative review, and holding basically myself or the applicant hostage until we address the concerns on the plans and get them into planning and zoning.
In this particular case, I totally agree with you. But how many applicants come in and come to us Wednesday and next Monday night go to planning and zoning?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. And to satisfy, if these conditions weren't all satisfied, and by tonight, where you're going to get them done by Monday, for her to review, to then recommend to them, et cetera, et cetera.
I understand, and that's a timing, that's a complete timing administrative.
So administratively, it sounds okay, but.
Why, for Mr. Chairman, number six, final plan set to reflect, why can't you put on that final plan set to reflect these items must be submitted within a month, or within a week, or whatever you want?
What if he doesn't, what if it doesn't happen?
Then he's not in compliance with his new permit.
And then what does that mean?
Then he gets a notice of noncompliance.
And, then what?
Then he doesn't look good in front of planning and zoning, he has, he's already noncompliant.
He's already got his permit from planning and zoning.
But he's non, oh, I see what you mean. Okay.
The answer is really, all these things should have been done two weeks ago. That's the answer, by whatever method it takes, but that's the answer. Half of these conditions should have been done, should have been, should have been there.
Aaron, why aren't they done? Because you didn't have the time to do them, or the correspondence didn't go back to any time? I'm just, I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just asking, where's the stall here? Why this, this void? Why, why didn't he have time to put these on his print before he came in this tonight?
I know, I don't think, he could have, absolutely, he could have done it over the weekend, absolutely.
Oh, oh, you work weekends, but nobody else does.
No, I do too.
Monday, Monday, Tuesday, occasionally. Actually, this is, the 29th was, what, Wednesday? He could have done, he had a week to do it, so.
But when, when did you get the plans to review, and how long did it take you to come up with this review list? You want to go into that program? Says May 16th here. It took you two weeks to generate this report?
I'm sorry, there's still no stockpile on this plan. I don't know why Mr. Giuliano hasn't put a stockpile on his plan. Why don't you ask him?
I don't know what that meant.
It means, why isn't there a stockplan, a stockpile on it? It's not, I scratch my head, where's the stockpile?
What's a stockpile?
For the new, isn't that the right term? For the new, for, when they excavate for the new expansion, when they do the dirt, they remove dirt for the new expansion and for the new parking lot, it's stockpiled on site.
I don't know, they're putting a wall in, they're going to need the fill somewhere. I think they're going to bring fill in rather than.
Well, first you have to stockpile it.
They're going to bring material in and not take it out. Do we want it all in environmental bond?
That ties together with the conditions of recommendations.
Oh, wait, so then, okay, so we can make a new condition nine, a environmental bond that ties together, we're tying together, was that paragraph four, five, and six?
All recommendations.
All.
All of environmental planners' recommendations.
And by or?
Or requirements. As stated in her report. Probably 5,000. I think the big issue here, though, is when is that basin going to be cleaned? That's, that I think is, prior to a building permit is interesting, and if they were going to start building, it would be satisfactory. But it's possible that it'll be 10 months or more before they look for a building permit. The, I want it cleaned out as much as the whole commission, but I think the commission has to realize it's been functional in the last 10 years, probably looking like it is today. But that doesn't mean it should stay that way. So how do we get that, that cleaned?
Can we do prior to a building permit, or by November 15th of 2019? Whichever comes first?
But how can you say that when you don't know when your client, depending on his start date? I don't want to go in there with a fist and say, this has got to be done, you know, that's functioning properly now, so do we want to ask them when their tentative start date is? Or say we go in there in phases, the first phase is going to be cleaning out the sand filter, and, I mean, you know better than we do because you're a client. So I mean, I don't want to force them to do this, but if we make this, it needs to be done first. You know, you said, you said, you yourself said tonight two or three times that this would happen before the construction of the property happened.
Right, and that, I am proposing, because I know it is such a concern for the commission, that it needs to be done first. And that's, you know, that's the, now whether you want it tied to the building permit or set, done by a certain date, I mean, getting a little hard-nosed with some applicants, I mean, in this case, I don't think it's a bad case, but you're right, it's functioning, but it really does need to be cleaned up. It's been neglected, so.
Okay, we got, we've got to correct item one on her list anyway, because she's, she is putting in a three-month timeframe. What's the commission think about a deadline of June 1st of next year? That's by that time, they're either going to start digging.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Item one, storm, restore storm basin and sand filter basin to be completed, completed by June 1st, 2020. Is that all right? That eliminates the whole sentence.
We said the sand filter too, or just the storm basin?
No, it says, work to restore the storm basin and sand filter.
We did no later than June 20, 2020. June 1st, 2020.
Or, or, or prior, see, I don't think you can walk right in and get a building permit, can you?
As long as you have your approvals, and you have building for the, you know, everyone's signed off all the department, so if everyone, say they, say, everything comes together and we have our sign off by September 1st, they could pull a permit on the 15th.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you, I'm not going to tie it to a building permit. I think there'll be enough issues going on with it, because I can see, you may want to get in there and then apply for the permit, and then, then the permit's two weeks later and the guy has already got the basin cleaned, you know, or vice versa, something else going on, which would be okay, actually, I think, okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to, to determine the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A-19.41, Three Technology Drive Class Schools Expansion be deemed to be not a significant activity.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and second, and any discussion? Offer a vote. Robert?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application A-19-4.13 Technology Drive Class Schools Expansion be approved, subject to the conditions laid out in the environmental report, planner's report of May 29th, 2019, amended as follows. Paragraph one, work to be, work to restore the storm basin and sand filter to be completed no later than June 1st, 2020. And to add a new condition attributable, item nine, an environmental behind that ties together the erosion control, I'm sorry, that ties together all of the environmental planning's requirements as stated in this, her report dated May 29th, 2020, be secured by a bond in the amount of $5,000.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second. I do have a comment. I just realized that we need, we do need erosion controls for when the storm basin is cleaned out. When they take the trees out of the storm basin, it's going to release mud, dirt, and then we're going to have a storm, and then.
That's what the sand filter does.
No, no, I mean, the basin where it's dumping into the swamp, out the other side, it dumps right into the swamp. So just, just say, and, and erosion controls for the cleaning or something, I don't know. It's going to be discharging sedimented material into the swamp, depending how many trees they yank out of there, roots, roots, they're going to yank roots out of there.
You know, I'm not.
Never mind, I can just monitor, I'll go and stop it.
You monitor, that's the best thing, because they're going to have erosion control fencing on the whole site, and they'll be in there. Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Call for a vote. Robert?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Application A-19.4.2, 155 John Street, Town of Wallyford Sewer Division. This is the phosphorus reduction project. This was administratively approved. Aaron and I went through it, it seemed to be, it was just a minor readjustment of some issues. It wasn't any more wetland involvement. Okay, application A-19.4.3, 153 Chimney Hill Road, Lauren Young.
Hi. Good evening, Chairman.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, Lauren Young, 153 Chimney Hill Road. So I'll go over what I want to do and then why. So on my property in the packet that you have, there's several maps of different options of things that I have, because this is, I have multiple things that I would like to do to the property. The first and highest on my list is building a berm in the back, so the far right back of the property where the wetlands is, to build a berm to redirect rainwater that comes down the hill through the swamp into my pond, which is a man-made pond. And this will help prevent the three streams that are created when there's heavy rain nine months of the year, and creates a lot of boggyness and stagnant water on my property all the way up to my front door, or back door, rather. So by doing this, I would need also a wear and forbay built into the pond to control overflow, because right now it does overflow when it rains. And there is a man-made stream off to the left side of the property that exits out underneath the road and down into another pond. So the stream does dry out, and I don't really even think you can call it a stream because of that. It needs to be redug because there's so much sediment that is level with the rest of the property and spills out back into the grass. And I would like to put water-resistant tarp and re-rock it and make it more functional so then there's less erosion happening when there's rain. And I would also like to go and refurbish the pond itself because there is lots of garbage inside of it and debris from years and years of neglect. I've already pulled out fence bits and sports equipment that's been in the pond, so I think it needs to be emptied out, relined, an aerator put in. There's already electrical line to the pond, but there's no current aeration system. I want to also put in skimmer systems so then the pond can be more cleanly on its own, and also put more local plant life back in the area. So my backup plan for the yard, because I know this is most likely not going to fix my water issue that I have with stagnant puddles. I lost my pool and my deck because of rot and rust. Because of this, I need to probably put in drainage systems, which is one of the papers I put in the back of the packet of the drainage system I'm looking at, and that probably will be put in throughout the property between the pond and the back of the house. And that would hopefully redirect water into the stream or waterway, so then there's less damage done to my home, because I do have a finished basement and I have two subpumps, one of which is constantly on 24/7. Lastly, I, oh, actually, two more things. I also have trees that are rotting, they're dead, or they're leaning towards the house, and they need to be removed. There's a total of 28 trees, some of them are not 50 feet within the wetlands property, but I just put it in there anyway, just for safety. And there's one tree that was suggested to keep even though it's dead because it's housing wildlife, that's the only one I want to keep. The rest that are growing into the waterway or are half-dead and leaning, they, they're just going to go. And I also want to build deer fence across the back of my property and a vinyl fencing on the front side where there's a stone wall currently. The stone wall will be removed, and this will protect my gardening that I would like to have in the backyard, because I have a very bad deer issue in my neighborhood. So that's the one thing I'm predicting you might have wariness about, but I would like to have that because of what I would like to do with my property. And I know this usually means that permits are going for two years, but because I can only really work in the dry months of summer and fall, I'm hoping maybe we can get a five-year permit so then we can do this installment, because this is an expensive project that I plan to do.
Do you have a contractor already that you've gone over this with?
I have one in mind, yes. And I've seen over seven different contractors, they all have different things and ideas, but this one has the mind of trying to protect the wildlife areas, and that is what I approve.
Aaron, you got some comments?
Yes, I've met several times with Ms. Young, and I suggested that she look into Roman Wazinski Southwest Conservation District for technical advice, which she did, and that was in one of your packets, maybe a month or so ago, a history report. And so, and I went out there and I met with Lauren and her husband, and we walked around, and this is one of those properties that probably never should have been turned into a home site, you know, you can, when you're there, you can tell that it was filled and it was a swamp, but now there's a home there. Anyway, so what I did in my environmental planner's report, I kind of, and I hope I did it, represented it well, I digested all the ideas and tried to make sense of them and put them in the order. I separated it into pond improvements, waterway improvements, and yard drainage improvements, three separate areas. Really, bottom line, all these are, bottom line, she's trying to protect her house and her. basement. Some of these things would be nice, make a pretty yard, but really, she's got to do what she has to do to protect her house. So, so that's what's driving this. That's what's driving this.
When, when was your house built?
57, 1957.
Commissioners, any comments?
I'm trying to picture where the house is on Chimney Hill Road. Is it, it's around the sharp corner there?
Yes. So if you go around the sharp corner, you go past the stop sign, it's about two houses down on the left.
Okay. On the left going up the hill?
Up the hill, yes.
You know where Compass Rock comes out on Chimney Hill?
Yeah.
Then it's the first one, it's not the corner.
I'm across the street from a home with a very large boulder. That probably is a good landmark.
I always call that parking lot.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
You got to answer the questions?
No, that's it, just...
No, I know where it is.
I think, I think the, the key to your success and the key to wetlands protection is the contractor.
Yeah.
This, this, we've certainly seen all kinds of different contractors, and I believe that anybody who is a contractor knows wetland regulations, and even though the homeowners or the property owners say, "I didn't know that," the guy who did the work knew it.
Yeah.
And, but I, I certainly can't, I have no recommendation for you as a contractor, or who, what, which contractor, but if you felt comfortable with him and that he's got a concern over environmental issues...
He knew a lot about wetlands in particular, in comparison to the rest of the people.
Well, I think one, one good thing in your, your program is if you take a project that he starts with the first year, you can see if he, if he, what kind of job he does and whether you want him to come back next year or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, my understanding, then, your first priority is going to be to stabilize the house?
Yeah, I want to do, I'm hoping to do, in the fall, the berm and take away, and take care of the tree problem, because there's some serious risk to the home with the trees. And I'm hoping next summer, well, we'll wait a couple months and see how the water flow has changed, and then we'll most likely go with the drainage next, the drain pipes. And then from there, like, take care of the fence and take care of the stream, you know.
And when you say a berm, do you mean he's going to bring dirt in and make a windrow in the back of your house?
Yeah, like a swooping kind of, because what we saw, we walked back into the forest, which partly I own, but not quite. The stream, you can see where the beds of the stream, where it branches off, and it swoops down and comes out of my property in two different sections. So we want to catch it before it branches off. So then, we're kind of doing two for one, and redirecting it straight into the pond. And hopefully, that will help some of the surface water I get. But I know it's not going to do everything, because, you know, hard pans at 18 inches, it's not going anywhere. So, I'm going to have to probably do the drainage after that.
Sounds a lot of, falls under a lot of maintenance items that probably have been neglected over the last 50 years.
It's overwhelming.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
This is, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application A-19-4.3, 153 Chimney Hill Road, Lauren Young, be deemed to be not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You guys discussion?
Yeah, this question's for Aaron. Aaron, why is Roman involved in this? What is he going to recommend for, I mean, does he know our regulations as far as encroachment in the wetlands and this? Why is he involved?
Roman, well, in his report, he did a very detailed report of her property and a map.
He gave suggestions, too.
And a map, you know, it really shows, this map is, you know, it, he does the color-coded, and he's got all the check dams and the silt fence and the turbidity curtain, all the different erosion control measures. And, you know, it really lays it out well. You know, it's free technical advice, and he's good with drainage. And he knows our wetland regulations, yeah.
Okay, so you...
As far as the well, and half the property in the back is wetlands, and the part in the front is Ludlow with the high-water table and fill. So...
All right, so is your recommendation, then, that she contact Roman to have him give his input?
No, she already got that. We, we have that, she has that. I'm not sure Roman comes out, he, sometimes upon request, depends on his schedule, he'll come out and supervise. He will, he will come and make comments when the contractor is working, say, "Oh, oh, you better put something up here," or whatever. But usually, he doesn't go back to a site, you know. He does the report, and that's usually it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, making a motion, application A-19-4.3, 153 Chimney Hill Road, Lauren Young, several yard improvements be approved, subject to the conditions of approval as set forth in the environmental planners' report dated May 30, 2019.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing under new business, but we got a couple of new applications. 12 Greve Trail in Spring Lake, is anything here that, that we should be dealing with, Aaron, on, on these new applications?
Um...
Four Miles Drive, oh, that's the, what's going on with the Miles Drive application? Is that, oh, Miles Drive? This is, okay, this is the east side of 90, uh, west side of 91.
Yes.
This is not...
Yes.
Is this the same firm that owns the other side of 91?
Yes.
New hotel on the other side?
The one that we just approved, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was confused. So, we'll just deal with it as a new application file. What are they, what are they doing, Aaron?
Just a standard hotel.
Yeah, but what, a new one? They're building another?
Yeah, it's, it's all wooded today and, and fields, yeah. It's all open today.
That's a shame.
Good. Okay. All right. So, now going into the G, Reports and Communications, I want everyone to be aware that we are required to be at a training session tomorrow night here in the town hall, this room, at 6:30, June 6.
Oh.
Okay. Going on to notice of violations, or violations, notice of violations, 988 Center Street, that has been satisfied, correct, Aaron?
Has it been? And I was just thinking about that, is it, it's not really over till it's over.
What part isn't?
In other words, till the wetland is restored.
Okay, but, that's interesting.
There's nothing left to do on it tonight, though, right?
Well, no, you could just say it remains, you could agree that that remains, you know, the notice of violation remains, meaning until they restore the wetland, it still needs attention, right?
Well, that then, then this notice of violation stays in effect until the wetlands has been, been recreated.
Wait a minute, let's back up, because we gave him permission to leave the material there.
Oh, no, no.
No.
He hasn't corrected the ones on his property, let alone the Tilcon. This isn't related to Tilcon.
Okay, because it says Providence and Moose River Company, filling in drainage.
Well, and that. You're right, but this is, this is...
All right, so just going to leave it open?
Just leave it open, just leave it, it's, it's, it's been addressed, but it's, it's...
Sure.
Notice of violation of application A-16-2.1, 530 Church Street, you have...
Yes.
...a report on that?
Yes, I do. He was sent a letter, you got a copy of it in the packet, you know, a letter saying, "Come on, get on it, let's go, and if you don't get on it by June 15, the commission is of a mind to perhaps pull your bond." So I did meet with the law department today, I went out there today. He's done some things, maybe, well, actually, he sent a crew out there yesterday, and they, they put down a lot of grass seed yesterday and a lot of hay mulch on top of the grass seed. Some of it, I thought, was too thick, you know, if you have hay mulch that's this thick, how's the grass going to grow? So, but, but I have photographs, I don't know if you care to see them. I have concerns about, I mean, okay, I guess backing up, let me just sit down with the law department. The law department said, what the commission might want to consider tonight is, does the June 15 deadline hold, or do you want to give him more time? That's one thing. If it's, if you are determined to have it done by June 15, then you should ask the law department to proceed with, with calling the bond. And the first, the first step in that for the law department would be, she would contact the entity that holds the letter of credit. That's the first step for her. So that's your choice. Do you give him more time, or would you like, tell staff to tell the law department?
Okay, Aaron, how far along is he? Would you, would you, what would you give it for, and we're talking about the retention pond, correct?
What it is, is, oh gosh, a bunch of erosion issues all sprinkled all over the site and the basin. The south side of the basin was never finished. It's very steep, it was not built to...
All right, just, that's fine, I don't, I don't care, you don't have to describe it. How far along to satisfy these conditions?
I have pictures. My point, what I was leading up to was to ask you a question, I need some direction, how...
No, I'm asking you, is he got 50% of them done? Has he got 25% of them done?
I don't know what "done" means. He doesn't complete things right. He does things poorly. He does it poorly. He executes things poorly.
Well, then, if it's that poorly, then he's going to get his bond pulled on June 15. If he's got 75 or 80% of the items done completely, and he needs another week or two, I would give him another week or two because of the wet, wet spring. But you can't give him till the next meeting, because when's our next meeting?
July 17. July 17.
In the middle of July, so it's a month, or it's six weeks from now, or five weeks from now.
Okay, then maybe you phrase it like, if, if it isn't done to my satisfaction by June 15, that I contact the law department to pull the bond. That is the vote you make tonight.
That could be the direction to go, but you also could give him another week. See, this is what, if, if, if it's not completed, if it's 80 or 90% done, and he needs another week, that's one thing. But you've got to be the one who determines this.
I think it's 85% done, but it's done poorly, so he's got to redo it?
Then, then what do you think, what does he think that means? What does that mean to us tonight, that it was done poorly?
Meaning, if you look at it from a distance, you say, "Oh yeah, he did it, he put in the erosion control blanket," but if you look closely, there's snakes under there where gullies him, or under the blanket.
What is the court going to say? What's the court going to say when they look at it? Is it done, or is it not done? I don't think the court recognizes whether it's a picture perfect or not. But if you sign up and say, "This is not done to the commission's satisfaction..."
If it's not functioning, it's not done. If it's not functioning like it's designed, like we said it was supposed to do, then it's not done.
We're, it will...
Aaron, he's been yes-ing us to death since last November. Just, I would contact the legal department or send him a letter, tell him that his bond will be pulled on June 12 if the work isn't done.
15.
June 15, I'm sorry. Whatever the date is, I'm tired of being yes to death. He comes in here in front of us and yeses us to death about everything, and he walks out of here and then you don't see him for three weeks or four weeks. Let him go in there with a small crew, button up what needs to be done, and then it's over and done with. I think we've been fair enough with him long enough.
I agree that, that, what I said before, that the commission should vote tonight. If, in staff's opinion, it's not adequately done by June 15, that the law department should begin proceedings.
Right. Is the commission in agreement with that?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, Aaron, do you have guidance? And that violation stays in, in, in effect. Okay, number three, 52 Hanover Street, he's, last we knew, he was working on that?
Yes, the Quinipack River Water Sheds Association went out and got plants. They contributed $800 worth of plant materials. The plant materials are native plants from Earthtones, which is a very reputable nursery, and they delivered them, and now they are at the site, and they're being watered, and they're, until they can get planted. And what else has happened? They took most of the trees out of the river, and so that works continuing. So, and Roman Rosinski of Southwest Conservation District is monitoring it, and he's going to help with the plantings. Actually, the owner and Roman are going to actually do the plantings. We were considering a lot of student help, we had some students lined up to help, but then the hillside broke out with poison ivy, and we don't want to subject the students to that, which is unfortunate, because it would have been a good educational experience for the kids to plant, do a restoration project. But the poison ivy has, you know, deterred us on that one.
Connecticut River Watershed fellow going to help? He was going to help plant.
No, they didn't want to do physical, the physical end of it, maybe liability, I don't know, but they certainly contributed enough with the plantings. That was excellent.
Okay. So, that's moving along smoothly, but it's still in effect. Okay. 12 Old Colony Road, Old Colony Road Properties LLC, unpermitted stockpile deposition, uncontrolled erosion, deposit, wetland stream, et cetera. That covers the base pretty well there.
Oh, okay, that...
You were out there yesterday, today?
No, I didn't go out there because he, the report came in on the last, May 30, this report came in, it's in your packet, your big packet that went out. The rains, they did take the sand out of the river, they took the sand out of the river, the big sand pile, that they did. But they've been hampered by doing a lot of the different stuff because of all the rains, but they've made some progress, they've made some progress.
Okay.
And his report is very detailed, and I have faith that he will see it through.
Okay, that stays in effect then. Application 18-1.2, 801 North Colony Road and 6 Belmont Road.
Okay, we have someone here to present on that one. What that was, I didn't issue a violation, but a lot of people were expressing concern. I heard concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission, from a few wetland commissioners, from various people in town. What happened to that river corridor? So, because frankly, it looks a lot different than even I envisioned it to be. So, I reached out to the ecologist who designed the river corridor plan, and the developer, Tractor Supply developer, and now I have a better understanding of why it looks like it looks. It looks a lot more like a desert than I had anticipated. But I went out there with Sigrid and George Logan, and they explained to me how it was implemented differently. A lot of people had thought that the whole place had gotten treated with chemicals, because frankly, it looked like it had gotten treated, even I thought it had been treated by chemical, with chemicals. But as Sigrid can attest, they did not use chemicals. What they used on the Japanese knotweed was cutting it, I think, eight times. They just cut it, cut it, cut it to death, and I was very impressed that it worked. If you go out there, you will see, maybe you can count them, I don't know, 20 Japanese knotwigs, but it was covered, that whole corridor was covered in Japanese knotweed. So, they did take down more trees than I like. What happened with that, George explained that there's a lot of bitter-sweet vines they found killing some of these trees. The trees weren't in that good health because of it. A lot of vines, a lot of dead trees. They did remove more trees than I anticipate, or anybody had anticipated. But they have a big planting plan, maybe you'd like Sigrid to talk about it. So we're going to, why I got on the agenda, too, I want them to hand in a revised plan. They had a very detailed plan, and now things have changed a little bit, so I think that plan needs to be revised for the files, so everybody understands. It's sort of like a moving target, like, where you end up is, is great. When we end up six years down the road, it's going to be great, but we have to understand how it shifts to get us there, what's shifting to get us there.
Well, I, I don't think the people, real... Well, I, I don't think the people realize, because, come up, go ahead Sigrid. I don't think people realize, driving by, what was really there, they just ignored it, and then, the people were shocked when they found there was a roadway in there, "Oh, somebody commented it was the old trolley track." It was not the trolley track, it was the road, okay? Beaumont Road never came out to Route 5, it came to Old, Old Colony, and that's the route that was behind it. But it had burns of, of material on the, between the brook and Route 5, it had Japanese knotweed all over everything, you, you no more saw the brook there than, uh, you, you saw the road there. What even, what, when they opened it up and everything they did there, and they opened it up, what shocked me most was the water coming out of Walmart. On a heavy, heavy rain like that, it is the most unbelievable gusher that I've seen in a long time. I see it all the time, I go by it every day. So, I mean, it's not green, the people are used to seeing something green there. I'm, I'm pleased that we suggested that they put the riprap baskets in the elbow, or the bend of the brook, or else that, that, I believe that washout, and not due to Tractor Supply, but Walmart, unfortunately, would have taken the road down past Rick's, Rick's on 5, taking the brook, excuse me, Brook on 5. I'm not sure, it shouldn't have another basket or two, when I looked in there today, that there's a little gouging out. But maybe they can get it stable, and I would take a few more things out of there. Haven't you got a tree that's laying down sideways in that area? And a half of a concrete culvert pipe sticking out that was there from before?
Yep.
Yes.
I mean, I would think that should, should come out.
Well, woody debris is, is actually helpful in any water course, or we need, you need to figure this out.
Yeah, okay, this is, Sigrid, add up the record, I'm-
Bring the mic for your voice.
I'm here representing REMA Ecological Services. I was, I was the person who initially designed the restoration, I wasn't involved la, um, last year, I actually had pretty bad lime disease, I wasn't doing much fieldwork, but I'm, was back and went to the site this spring, and just, I just want to clarify a few things, and, and, and give you an idea of what to expect. First of all, there, there was a tremendous amount of Japanese knotweed, and that, that was the, you know, the, the lion's share of the green that one saw. It was, it was, as Erin said, cut back repeatedly to weaken it, and, but George and I just learned, we talked to the landscaper, and on October 7th, there was, um, spot treatment of remaining sprouts of Japanese knotweed with, with triclopiate. So there was one final herbicide application after it had been cut back repeatedly. Um, the, um, there were, the main reason that there are fewer trees than we'd expected is, as Erin said, there was a lot of bittersweet and grapevines, um, growing up, the young box elders, the young black cherries, a lot of young trees that were, um, I had envisioned that those would stay, that they would, um, kill the, the vines, and that tho, and that those would be allowed to recover and grow back, but they were considered, I guess, the, we had marked them, um, to be, to be saved, but the landscapers made the decision that they were so impaired and twisted and unsightly because of having been under the burden of vines, that they just cut them down. And that, that's a shame, and that really shouldn't have happened, and they were all so perfectly healthy, though stunted by vines, spice bush plants that were cut down, um, again, the, the decision by the landscapers, this is, and partly, it's a matter of effort, because they didn't want to pull the vines off, and untangle, and untwist, and that's, that's a time-consuming process. I do it myself, but it wasn't done. And, um, so, we want, are we, the, um, the plan has, um, breaks the site down into multiple areas, and has, um, lists of how many, um, trees and shrubs of, of different types are to go in different areas. We would like to add, um, about 15 trees to the, to the list, that's the numbers that are there, to make up for the saplings of mostly box elder and black cherry that got cut down. And, um, also, um, we did cut down invasive Norway maples, which were, there were, there were six or seven of those, and those are, are, they really, people don't realize how invasive the, the Norway maples are, they, they seed in everywhere, and, and instead of sugar maples, or red maples, you get, get Norway maples coming up. And, um, and there were also, um, half a dozen ash trees, which were either sick, or going to die shortly, so those were cut down. So the, so that's, that, that contributed to it. Um, the, the schedule for this, for this year is that we're, we're gonna limit the planting, um, this June to, and if you look at the, the pictures that, that we have here, that, let's just quickly go through. The first picture, um, is in a southwesterly direction, and there you can see the erosion control blanket, and, um, the second picture is in a, um, northwesterly direction, you can see a number of trees preserved in the, at the far north end, and then a little bit of a, a big cottonwood that was preserved in the middle. And, um, then you see, uh, one, a positive surprise that we had was that underneath the Japanese knotweed, there were, um, extensive areas of spring, native spring ephemerals, of, of, um, Dutchman's breeches, trout lily, um, and also, um, bloodroot, and, um, you know, on the, on the north side, and, but they were all on the, um, east side, east bank, that, I guess the west bank was, had, is basically filled when the, when the road was built, and it's a lot lower quality soil, and it, that did not have the rhizomes of the native wildflowers. The, um, you, if you look at the second, or the third to last picture, you can see a nice terrace, and with a, around a cottonwood, and that's a moist area with, which is, um, it's got some capillary action coming from, up from the brook, that, that's, that had a lot of, um, spice bush, silky dogwood, um, sweet pepper bush in the planting plan, and that's gonna be planted this June. And also, um, this wasn't on the plan, but we're gonna plant some similar shrubs, if you look at the very first picture, on the top, on the, um, the nearly level terrace on the, um, far south side, on the west side, that, that's, um, moist, relatively level, good soil, and that, and that's also gonna be, the shrub plantings are gonna start there. The, um, the, a lion's share of the, of the woody plantings will take place this sep, coming September, um, and that includes mid-slope plantings of, um, witch hazel, hazelnut, shad bush, um, as well as pin oak and, and, um, pin oak, sugar maple, sycamore, um, you know, trees that can grow, be able to grow on the bank, not necessarily immediately adjacent to the stream, but higher on the banks. And there should be good stem density, um, especially the hazelnut is a, is a very, um, has a lot of foliage and leaves, and that should be, um, a, a good screen, visual screen for, um, and picking, picking up air pollution coming from the road too, filtering. Um, the, it's a, it is a six-year program, and the, the mechanical cutting of the knotweed is gonna continue through that entire period, continuing to, it should be less time-consuming with every year, as it, as it dwindles away. Um, and, um, the follow-up herbicide treatment will be, will take place this year, um, but not, not after that, just the, just the mechanical. Though, though, um, follow-up of a invasive bittersweet of, of the sprouts, that still might happen in, in subsequent years. We want to put, um, the New England roadside matrix mix on the, plant the, the steep west bank with that, that seed mix. It doesn't have that much Japanese knotweed, it has a lot of garlic mustard, which is, um, at the, at present, it's the first year, not the, it's not fruiting this year, but we're, it, it needs to be, to be, um, basically mechanically hoed and, and gotten rid of, um, in farming style. But, um, the, the roadside matrix mix has stagorn sumac and, and arrowwood, it has several shrub seeds, in, in, in addition to the various grasses and golden rods and asters. So that seems like a good mix for that, for that steep west slope. In addition to, I think the 11 trees and, um, 15 shrubs are gonna be put in there as well. Um, and, let's see, the very last stage will be, in year six, we'll put in some, um, some nice woodland herbs, like Christmas fern, and, um, Hartley's aster, some potted plants from, like, from a local nursery, um, that, that supplies native plants, but, um, once the Japanese knotweed is really under control. So, um, and there, there's a, there is one erosion gully that needs to be repaired, and, um, so we, we do, do want to leave a little woody debris in the stream, because any natural stream has woody debris, it's, it's part of the habitat, um, there, um, diatoms and macro vertebrates that attach to the wood. Um, and, um, we're, we think they did a really good job with the, with the, the erosion controls, with the blank, the blanket was very well installed, and the, and as you said, the, 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 um, stone in the, in the, in the crate, or, um, wire mesh containers, and the, the, and there's, there's hay covering the areas that are not planted right now, and it's, it's, some of them, um, there, there's grass seed coming up through it now too. Um, there, there is one evergreen that's gonna need to be replaced, tipped over, that, that will be taken out. Um, so, does anybody have any questions?
You got one tipped over and one dead.
Yeah, of the evergreens, yes.
Any other questions, Ally?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
No.
I, I have just one comment. I, I knew a lot of this, but I would like REMA Ecological Services to submit some kind of report, just to update my file, like what you said.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have to be as detailed as you said, but something to, so we have in the file that things are different from what we thought would happen.
With the additional plantings on the west side especially.
Right, but also, something about why it got, why it got so open, why so much vegetation, in a paragraph, why, why it looks so different, so open, and then what the new plantings are.
Just the loss of the, of the small pole-sized trees.
Yeah, maybe one page, just so we can have an update in our file.
Mm-hmm.
And, and progress reports as we move along.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Keep in touch. Okay, notice of violation, 1245 Old Colony Road, Quinnipiac River.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
The owner cannot be here, unfortunately, he's got bad allergy after all day working on the property, removing cars, and, you know.
You have to speak to the manager.
Oh, my name is, okay, Greg, G R E G, Grabarczek, G R A B A R C Z Y K. And I'm the general manager of the J and D Auto Sales LLC.
You got quite a project going on there, Erin, you wanna fill the commission in?
Yeah, I got a phone call from the chairman, um, I guess it was late Wednesday, I think, and Thursday, I went out there with the town planner, actually, we both went out there, and, uh, this property is accessed off Old Colony Road, you can't really see what's going on from Old Colony, you gotta go back in there. So there's a tremendous amount of fill, I'll, I'll plant, I'll pass the photographs around. This property has been, it's an industrial property, it's manipulated over the years, you know, this wasn't a pristine area, however, they've, they've gone back further toward the river than in previous years. Um, there, the intent, as I, when I talked to the owner, Jersey Patel, was to make, to make, made land, it, he's made a lot of new land at the elevation of Old Colony Road. In other words, the land went down to the river, and he's just made it out like a giant plateau, he's built this plateau out, with a tremendous amount of fill material. Most of that is not in our jurisdiction, however, most of the fill material is upland, there's, there's a lot of fill material within our jurisdiction, but the majority of it is, is out of our particular jurisdiction. They, I have requested, a notice of violation went out yesterday, I did ask, when I went out there to the site, I did ask the gentleman to cease and desist their activities, and the fellows got off the bulldozers, they got off the, um, dump truck went away, they didn't come back, they were told, "Go away, don't come back, don't bring any more fill back today." And the owner said he would cease and desist all operations. He then sent someone out while I was standing there to get silt fence, and they brought back silt fence, and they started putting in silt fence where I wanted it, along the rip, near, close to the river. So he appears to be cooperating, I did talk to him at 3 o'clock today, he expected to be here, but he said he had an allergic attack from working out there with the grasses, and, and, you know, was in bad shape, which I guess was represented. Anyway, so, uh, I would like to pass out a, a picture of the land, so you understand how long and skinny this lot is going back, and how it, the Quinnipiac River wraps around on three sides of this property. Um, I guess I'll be out there a lot, because it's, it's, it's so enormous, the property's only five and a half acres, but just, there's just a lot of work being done out there. I don't know if the commission wants to set a site walk out there?
Well, not until we get some kind of map and see what we're involved with in here. I mean, if you're talking of, a lot of this material is outside of the upland review area.
Yes, one of, back to the map you mentioned, uh, in the notice of violation, I gave several directives, one of which was to hire an engineering firm to do a survey, so we can, so we would have a survey of where the extent of fill was. But to your, to your point, there is a tremendous amount of violation in our jurisdictional area, not to worry, even though most, most of the fill is out of it, there's still a lot, there's filling to within 10 feet of the river, and that's where I directed him to put hay bales. Um, now, of course, I'm hoping that we don't have flood conditions, a lot of this is in the, the 100-year floodplain, if that river crests, it is not good. There's a lot of this raw earth is in the floodplain now, subject to, to the floodwaters, if that should happen. Um, we, I did direct him to put the floodway line on the map, so I know exactly where it is, and as well as, you know, the, uh, the floodplain program is managed by the town planner, so she also wants to know where that floodplain line is. Uh, he also was given a cease and desist by the planning department, and he has several zoning violations out there, concerned with running a junkyard, and without the proper permits, and so on, and the filling, bringing in all the fill. It's a big mess.
Well, okay.
I will, I'm sorry, I will not call that big mess, because what he was doing, he was actually updating the property, that's one thing, he bring that fill, just, you know, he didn't know that has to be asked, I spoke with you when, first when I came them, uh, there, and, uh, we don't know that he has to apply for a permit. Matter of fact, he went today to city of Maryland, because he's getting built two houses, and he needs a lot of fill, so they're gonna bring that, all the fill, uh, to Maryland area now. a lot of fill, so they're going to bring that all the fill to Meriden area now. And there was no problem, they give him the, okay, he's going to pick up the permit tomorrow. If we knew that we have to pick up the, you know, from the town, okay, we will go this way, but we didn't know, we just don't know. And, you know, those cars are there, because he must explain to you that he owns a junk car in Meriden, JC Recycling, and there was a lot of, loads bringing up there, because there was a lot of water standing and stuff like that from the rains, and the soil was kind of, you know, soft, so he has to make that additional layer on, and that's why some cars was haul to that property, and wanting for, you know, to, when the job was done, tomorrow, they're not going to be probably even one car up there, because they're working all day long today, they're going to be working all day long tomorrow. And another thing is, he just wanted to make sure that the property is, you know, nice, you know? It was nothing like, you know, he did, because he just wanted to do something bad.
Well, you don't think it's bad, but it's not good for the wetlands or the river.
Yes, now.
That's the issue.
Right, now I understand, but that's a clean fill, and really, there was not that, you know, I don't know, thing the lady exaggerated, I was so, you know, big amount, big amount of, you know, of the fill, but it's a clean fill, and I don't know what, that's what it is, you know, I can't only say that we know about it, and it was not going towards the river, and my thinking that that is in a flood, you know, area. So it has to be removed, we will remove it though.
Well, you can work with Erin and get the problem resolved. Meanwhile, the violation stays in effect, correct?
Yes, do you want to set a site visit?
No.
No.
Not until, not until there's a map or something, see what we're talking about.
Good idea, right, and, yeah. Do we want to put a deadline on when that map should be submitted to us?
Our next July meeting.
I'm sorry?
Our next July meeting.
Okay. Or maybe a week before, so I can look at it, or whatever? A week before July, so, be July 10, submitted to the environmental planner by July 10. First, okay, so what I need the commission to do is to agree with the notice of violation, to affirm the notice of violation that was sent out.
I think we did, I think the commission confirms, affirms the violation exists.
And then to, to set a timeframe for when the survey map and posting the property line, there was some confusion even with the owner, where that property line was on the south side, he wasn't sure about that. So we want to, if he's filling on somebody else's property, we want to know about it. And to direct him to execute all the directives that were in this notice of violation, and maybe if you want to add some more?
Well, I don't know if you, what you can do until you get this map and see what's in and out, even with violations, I mean, you're in the floodplain, but that's, you say that's not our purview, that's planning and zoning? And the other thing is, I'm not sure you can get this work done in four or five weeks.
The survey work, well, it's only five acres, it's five acres, the whole piece.
That's fine, five acres, but you get the surveyor out there, you get him to do the research on the maps, you get him to go to the next spot. I'm not siding with him.
He might have to work a lot of weekends.
Oh, got to work weekends, that's right. I'm just trying to be realistic here, that if it isn't done by the 10th, what are you going to do then? How far along is the map by then? That's the issue. Can a surveyor get this work done in four weeks? To get the perimeter of the property, the A2 survey, stake the property out, you can drive for it, and you deal with it next month. I'd rather wait, I'd rather go the following month. What, August? Yeah.
They don't have a meeting.
They don't have a meeting yet.
Well, no, it's September 6th or something. All right. Well, yeah, I'll be back for the July meeting.
You know, we will follow all the direction we get, you know, from you guys, what to do, we will do it, it's not a question that we're going to be, you know, fight this or this or that.
Then you work with her on it?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
I work with everybody, if somebody want to work.
That's fine. All right, Erin?
That sounds good, so it's, are we going?
We start with, until they don't do what they say they're going to do, then we go from there.
Okay, so the commission's going to vote to affirm the notice, and with giving a timeline of July 10 for the maps to be submitted and this property be posted, the survey flags?
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but this gentleman said, if you tell him to take the stuff out, it sounds like he's going to take the stuff out.
Oh, no.
I'm not, I'm not sure if the map is necessary, I shouldn't say necessary, it's necessary, but you're going to give a lot of directions, and he may have resolved most of the issues.
Okay. I never told him to take the fill out. If he was told it was the town planner, I don't know.
But he said he's willing to work with you, he just said it now.
Okay, there is, this place needs erosion controls, there's just raw fill everywhere, so we have to contain it. I intend to go out there in the storm and see how it's running?
Well, no, but what do you want us to do? You're going to put a map in, or you could, he'll put soil erosion up already, he said, you said he did.
Yes.
Right, so the soil erosion is, what do you want us to do? We confirmed that there's a potential violation there, what do you want us to do now?
Just, it's a legal thing, that you just vote for a timeline of July 10 to get these directives done.
Well, or to, okay.
And to ask him to return, not him, but the owner, to come back at the July 17th meeting and let us know how it's going.
Okay, then I'm requesting the commission's, affirms that the application, or the violation of 1245 Oak Colony Road stay into effect, and that we are going, we are looking for a map or some major progress by July 10, and we request that they return to the meeting on July 17th. Is that the date, 17?
Yeah.
July 17th. Is the commission in favor?
Yes.
All in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
All set.
Okay, so we have to do the maps, right, hire somebody to do the maps, right, where the, but I have to know exactly what kind of map, so you're going to tell me all the information, right?
You may have a map already in effect from when you bought the property, man you burn.
Probably, yes.
So there's already probably a map done, so if you get that map, that's where your surveyor can start with that.
Behind that, you know, the fill was put there, there was so much, you know, tanks, what you really want to see, and nobody see it before, the guy was keeping alive pigs up there.
Yeah, pigs, dead pigs.
Yeah, listen, there were so many, tanks.
That piece of property has a tremendous history that some of us know about.
Oh, okay.
You don't know.
And he cleaned up all this stuff, you know, he cleaned up all this stuff, and he just wanted to make, look nice.
You don't want to start digging out there, trust me.
No, no, no.
You don't want to start digging, there's nothing, you might find dishes and glasses.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the meeting, oh, well, I have one more thing, after we're done here, I have one more thing.
Okay, so we're all set. You work with her, and I think she'll guide you along on what's needed.
Yeah, no problem.
And she'll work with your engineer or whoever you choose.
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much for it.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Okay, Erin, what?
Okay, I just wanted to tell the commission that the demolition started three weeks ago at 5 Research Parkway, and I've been getting the reports, the weekly reports we required, I get them once a week since two weeks ago.
Good.
No issues.
Anything to come before this commission tonight, anything else?
Chris.
No, Chris is with him, isn't he?
So, so next year, often, for the calendar for next year, we often end up canceling the January meeting. What if we were to meet regular during the summer and then do our month off in January instead?
I, you know, I don't have a lot of problem with it, and ironically, with the light agendas we've been having, I mean, other than the violations here.
Yeah, we don't have very much business, that's why.
Right, summertime's like our busier, our busier time, spring's busiest time, but we don't really do anything in the winter.
We've had some busy winters.
Yeah.
I think, I'm not against that suggestion.
The last two years, we've canceled January meetings.
Due to weather.
Well, and light agenda.
What?
And a light agenda.
Light agenda, let me make cancel again. Okay, okay, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thanks, adjourn.